I call to order the Gladstone Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. It's 6:31 PM. On tonight's agenda, we have the consent agenda, one item, that's approval of the minutes from our previous meeting on March 16th. And then we will hear a report for our planner, and then we have a public hearing related to a variance request. And then the usual business, business from the audience or from the planning commissioners themselves. So Tammy Bannock, will you call the roll before we have the flag salute?
Yes, I can. Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Labonte.
Present.
Commissioner Poole.
I'm here.
Commissioner Mercero.
I'm here.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Here.
Chair Milch.
Present. Let's join in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. You should see it on your screen in Tammy's box. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Thank you. Let's see, first item on our agenda is approval of the March 16th minutes. They were in your packet. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them? And does anyone have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I've reviewed and I'm good with their current format.
Okay?
I'll second that.
All right, I, okay, I will take Commissioner Langston's comment as a motion to approve. And Commissioner Mercero has seconded the motion. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed and hearing ayes, I will assume the minutes were approved. Let's move on to the regular agenda of the planner's report. Joy Fields.
Well, tight, Joy. We're moving you up.
Have to get everything situated. Good evening. So the Gladstone monthly report for the month of March is in your packet, and I have shared my screen so that you can see it. There were no customer service counter contacts that I'm aware of for the month of March. However, you'll notice that phone calls and emails were still high with 56 phone calls and emails. There were five building permits with Landy's review. There were no pre-application conferences, and there was one administrative decision. The administrative decision was a zoning verification. And in addition to the administrative permit, the city council did adopt the Gladstone Housing Needs Analysis on March 9th, and you all remember reviewing that multiple times last year. So it has been adopted. The building permits that were reviewed by both planning staff and sent on to Public Works included a roof replacement for a couple of duplex buildings up on Webster Road, a new single-family home, and a second new single-family home. The property owners resurrected historical property boundaries and proposed new single-family homes on the lots on Dartmouth Street. There was also a signed permit and a remodel. Are there any questions for me?
Hearing no questions from the commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report of the planner.
I'll make a motion that we accept the planner's report as presented.
Second, all right, Commissioner Les Poole moved, and Commissioner Pat Smith seconded the motion to accept the planner's report. I can't see everyone on the screen, but so Tammy, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero? Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Milch?
Yes. The motion passed seven to zero, so the report is accepted. We move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a hearing, public hearing for a variance. Most of the time, we have hearings related to people establishing that they have met criteria and followed the zoning rules. A variance situation comes up when someone acknowledges that that a current or proposed structure or land use does not follow the rules, but they're asking for permission to vary from those rules. And they've made application to the planner. The planner has reviewed it and made some recommendations for us. Our job tonight is to hear that report and make a decision on it. Since we are still in COVID and doing these remote hearings, I have a special script for those kinds of hearings, and I will introduce it now. Public testimony for this hearing will be called for in three groups: testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you are participating online and planning to participate in this hearing, you can click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized by Tammy Bannock, who can admit you to the meeting. If you're participating via telephone, you can dial nine or star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. We generally have speaking time limits, about 15 minutes for the applicant's presentation, three minutes each for audience members testifying in favor, against, or neutral, and five minutes for the applicant's rebuttal to any testimony given by audience members. We can be flexible with those time limits tonight. We have just this one hearing, and we want to be sure that the applicant has, receives all the time necessary. So I will open the public hearing for application number Z0094-21-V. It is 6:39 PM on April 20, 2021. First of all, I'd like to ask if any members of the hearing body, that's the planning commission members, would like to abstain from hearing this variance hearing tonight? I hear no abstentions. I would like to ask if any of the members of the planning commission have a conflict of interest on this matter. And we'll go one by one. I'll begin with Commissioner Langston.
I have no conflict of interest.
All right. Commissioner Natalie Smith?
No conflict at all.
Commissioner Andrew Labonte?
No conflict.
Commissioner Les Poole?
I have no conflict.
Commissioner Tom Mercero?
No conflict.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
No conflict.
And I'm Chair Michael Milch, and I declare no conflict as well. Now, I'd like to ask if anybody on the planning commission has any ex, has had any ex parte contact, including whether or not you have visited this particular site. And I'll again start with Commissioner Langston.
No ex parte contact, and I have not visited the site.
All right. Commissioner Natalie Smith?
No ex parte, and I have visited the site.
Okay. Commissioner Andrew Labonte?
No ex parte, and I have driven past the site, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Les Poole?
Yeah, I have no ex parte contacts, and I briefly visited the site.
All right. Commissioner Tom Mercero?
No ex parte, and I did visit the site.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
I have no ex parte, and I have visited the site.
Okay. And again, this is Chair Milch. I, I have no ex parte communication. I did visit the site. I drove past it the other night to eyeball it. It's always easier than just looking at a two-dimensional drawing on a page. So now there have been no declared ex parte contact and no declared conflict of interest. Does anyone present wish to challenge anybody on the planning commission from hearing this, this particular public hearing? I'll wait to be sure that the, that the interested parties are admitted.
I have let them in. If they would challenge anything that was said already, they would have to unmute themselves.
I would, I have no challenges for this right now.
Okay, then I think we are ready to participate, or I mean, to proceed with the hearing. And I have a few statements I have to read at the beginning. "If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing, state law grants any party the right to request a continuance of this hearing, or ask that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal your decision to, or the decision to the land board use of appeals based on that particular issue. And failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court." Those are the required statements to be made at the beginning. I now call on Planner Fields to share the staff report.
Chair Milch, would you like me to share the staff report or the staff presentation? You have received both in your packets? And I would be happy to present either of them. If you would prefer that report, that would be fine, or I'm happy to do the PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, let's have you do the PowerPoint presentation. That's what you prepared for the hearing. We've all had an opportunity to review the written report, but this presents it concisely to us, and I think that's a good, good way to proceed.
If you have any questions about specific pages from the staff report, I'm happy to address those after or during my presentation when you feel the need to bring those items up.
Thank you.
So tonight, I'll briefly review what the proposal is, and then I would like to go into detail on the variance criteria and discuss potential next steps. As many of you noted, you have driven by the site, which is 205 West Arlington Street there in Gladstone. And there is an existing structure of both a house, and to my knowledge, there is an existing garage and a storage building, although the applicant may have mentioned that one or the other have been removed due to damage due to trees. The proposed project is the request of a variance from the existing setback requirements in the R5 Single Family Residential Zoning District to allow a new garage with a second story for storage that would replace the existing garage and the existing shed in the rear corner of their lot. I am unable to do my normal. There it is. I was able to figure it out. The project site is zoned R5. It is a single-family residential zone. The parcel in question, or the property in question, is 50 feet by 100 feet. And you see here that there is an existing garage and storage shed in the rear corner, and the proposed garage is in almost the exact same location. It is set back further from Bellevue Avenue than the existing garage in the proposed site plan. Public noticing was sent out to property owners and Gladstone departments. Comments were received from Public Works and Engineering during the recent pre-application conference. What was submitted by the applicant for the application was very similar, if not the same, as what was received for the pre-application. The proposal did not change. And so therefore, no additional comments were received.
Planner Fields?
Yeah.
I don't know if this is the case with everyone. Now your slides fill up the screen so much, I can't see the edge of them. Does everyone else have that situation as well?
Would you prefer that I do the, the, this view so that you can see the entire slide?
What I, yeah, I'd like to be able to see the whole thing and make sure that I'm not missing something. All right, thank you.
If you would like me to zoom in to a specific area of the slide, just let me know. So in the R5 zoning districts, accessory uses such as garages and storage buildings are allowed when there is a primary use such as a home on the property. When the accessory use is detached from other buildings, is one height or one story in height and does not exceed 450 square feet, the setbacks for the side setback and the rear setback can be reduced to zero for those small structures. If it is reduced beyond what is the normal setback in the R5 zone, a wall of rated fire-resistant construction may be required by the Oregon Structural Specialty Code or its successor. And I spoke with the representative of the Building Codes Division, and that is the case. If this proposal goes forward, the, during the building process, they would have to have a wall of fire-resistant material and no windows on that side of the building to move forward through the building process. The dimensional standards for the R5 Single Family Residential District include a minimum lot area of 5,000 square feet. The subject property is 5,000 square feet at 50 by 100 feet. And the setbacks, if you do not meet the, the reduced setbacks that are allowed for accessory structures because it's too large, or it is attached to the home, then the setbacks that would have to be met would be five feet from the side property boundary, 15 feet from the rear property boundary, and 20 feet from the street side setback if it's a corner lot. And the street side setback is different than the front setback. However, architectural features may extend into those setbacks. Because the proposal is too large to meet the reduced setbacks and does not meet the other setback requirements per 17.12.070, the applicant is requesting a variance. Variances from the Gladstone Municipal Code may be approved where it can be shown that strict application of the provisions of the title would cause an undue or unnecessary hardship. You are not allowed to grant a variance if, if it would result in an illegal activity. But the, the approval of a variance may be granted, subject to conditions of approval found necessary to protect, protect the interests of the surrounding area and achieve the other intent, the, the requirements of the other sections of the code. The applicant provided a letter with their application, and there is an excerpt from that letter in the attached, or in the visible slide. But you all received that prior to this meeting and should have had the ability to read that. The circumstances for granting a variance include that there is evidence of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zoning district or vicinity that results from lot size or shape legally existing prior to the date of the ordinance codified in this title, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. This is the one aspect of the Gladstone Municipal Code that I was unable to find support for. And so if you look at the R5 zoning district in yellow here, there are many lots that are 50 feet by 100 feet. All of these small squares are the same size. The property in question does not have steep topography or any other environmental constraints that would limit it from meeting the setbacks or meeting the, the, the requirements of the code. Many of the lots in the R5 zoning district were created in the early 1900s. There is an excerpt here of the plat that created these lots. And in block 11, Lot 1, is the subject property, right on the corner of Arlington and Bellevue.
Joy, can I clarify one thing really quick? In the last slide, at the end, you said that you couldn't find anything that wouldn't allow it to not meet the code.
So I, I was unable to find exceptional or extraordinary circumstances that were different for this lot compared to other lots in the zoning district.
Okay, so therefore, it necessarily wouldn't meet the specifications for the code to be eligible for variance?
Therefore, based on the information I had when I wrote the staff report, I was unable to recommend approval. And I am putting forth the, the current zoning map and the plat as evidence of the lot dimensions and the similarity of the subject property with properties in, in that zoning district. In section 17.72020, a continuation of the circumstances for granting a variance, there is this, this section that is for the preservation of rights. If the variance is necessary for the preservation of a property right, the applicant, that is substantially the same as owners of other property in the same zoning district or vicinity that they possess. I would note in this section that this is an aerial image, and I don't know if you, can you see my cursor going across the screen here?
Yes.
There is a purple line that I superimposed on the tax lots here. And the reason that purple line is there, it's in the staff report, is that the subject property is here on the corner, and the purple line is at the front of the house. Projecting across the purple line is a porch. However, if you look at the homes on the lot, the front of the homes extend past the property line for the remainder of that block. And so the applicant's home is set further back from West Arlington Street than the homes on the same block. Therefore, there is less room behind the home for the, the building of accessory structures. And the home is, is predates zoning. And therefore, the applicant was not able to impact where the home was built. For those that have not gone by the site, this is an image from Google Street View of the, the subject property from West Arlington Street. And you can see that it's set back further than the neighboring structure. The circumstances for granting a variance is continued in the code. It, they have to be not material, materially detrimental. There is nothing detrimental about granting a variance for a garage, which is an allowed accessory use in the zoning code. In my personal review, it was in line with the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan, and therefore is not materially detrimental. There is this section in the circumstances for granting a variance that it, the variance shall be the minimum variance that would alleviate the hardship. And so in, in my mind, and as I was reviewing the materials, I thought about if the proposed garage was attached to the home instead of detached, would they have enough space to build the garage? The answer is no. Because the rear setback is 15 feet for a structure of this size, the street side setback is 20 feet, and the side setback is five. So even if they closed this five-foot, three-inch gap between the existing home and the proposed garage, you would still not meet the 15-foot rear setback. And you would still not meet the 20-foot street side setback.
Clarification, then, really, if it's attached, it becomes part of the original structure, right?
And
Or how does that look at? Because I'm not confused about what you're explaining, but Or how does that look at? Because I'm not confused about what you're explaining, but I'm at what point is it no longer a detached structure, I guess is what I'm saying.
What I'm saying is, is there another way that the applicant could have designed this to meet the code? And have the seven hundred and seventy six square feet that they are proposing. And I was unable to find a way on the existing site to meet this the setbacks with a structure that large. Therefore, we planning staff is unable to recommend approval unless all of the criteria are met. And because staff was unable to find exceptional or extraordinary circumstances. For this proposal, I am recommending a denial of the variance at this time.
All right, that is the staff report from our planner. At this time, we will hear a report, a presentation from the applicant or the applicant's representative. Tammy, will you admit the the person who's scheduled to speak at this point?
Mr. Whitmore is on.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for your time. Thank you, Joy, for the report. I really don't have a lot to add to this other than I'd like to kind of touch on one thing, and it's really more of a question for Joy at this point. After digging a little deeper, I'm under the impression that corner lots now have when you say a rear setback, I'm under the impression that there's actually two street side setbacks and two side setbacks. That there is no rear setback of fifteen feet, which would mean there'd be two five foot setbacks on the sides of each street essentially. Which really doesn't change anything on this proposal because I wouldn't be able to meet those setbacks either. I'd still have to request for the variance. One thing that I'd like to also point out about exceptional or extraordinary circumstances that was not included in my application. That I think is applicable. Being I'm on a corner lot, I do have a thirty foot by thirty foot clear visual path on the corner that needs to be satisfied. On the intersection of Bellevue and Arlington, which doesn't directly affect the plan that I've proposed, but it is just another thing that would restrict where I would be able to put any structures on my property with its current layout. So I guess what I'm saying is what I'm applying for is really the only place on my property that could have a garage built, whether it was four hundred and fifty six square feet or six hundred square feet. And even at that four hundred and fifty six square feet, technically, I would not meet even the street side setback on Bellevue. And if you guys are all familiar with kind of the old part of Gladstone, the blocked area, I guess, south of the high school, I'd say. There are numerous examples on almost every single avenue that does not have sidewalks of properties that are built on either a four foot or less in some case setbacks. And in my application, I included numerous examples of detached structures that I can actually see from my lot. These are all neighbors within close proximity to me that have two story detached structures that are all much larger than four hundred and fifty six square feet that are all built on less than the required setbacks. And so I guess that was something I just really wanted to point out to the council. I mean, there are examples from almost, like I said, on almost every single avenue, which all of which don't have sidewalks. And then Bellevue is also the street where the pipeline was put in a few years ago, which actually widened the street even a little bit more. Which cut into whatever existing driveway I did have at that point. So my current driveways don't allow for vehicle parking. Everything is off on the street. And so that is another reason for wanting to move that garage back off of the property line a little bit would be to allow for off street parking in front of the garage. And and really, as as I thought, I think Joy did a good job of explaining, there's really not much different, anything different than I'm not really increasing or changing the footprint of what's already there and existing. The two existing buildings are bit built on the setback that I'm that I'm asking to build a new a new structure on. So I just asked that be taken into consideration in your guys' decisions.
Do you happen to know how deep that pipeline was on Bellevue?
How deep?
Yeah.
Oh, as far as how how far down it went?
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, it was probably about ten feet deep in right out in front of the house. And they didn't add any sewer or anything like that. So there's actually, as far as I know, on Bellevue Avenue, there's not a single street address until you get further north. So there's like a seven or eight block area, and I'm not sure if that's the same on every avenue. On Gladstone here and the old part of Gladstone, but it certainly is on Bellevue. For those of you that drove by the site, I hope they had an opportunity to drive around the rest of the neighborhood and at least take a look at the examples that I provided. Like I said, in my application, there's at least two examples of buildings that are within, you know, a half a block of my house that are essentially exactly what I'm trying to do. So.
Joy, in response to Mr. Whitmore's statement, could you clarify for us the difference between a front setback and a side setback and a rear setback? Particularly specifically as it relates to a corner lot?
I can. To do so, I would like to share my screen with the Gladstone Municipal Code brought up. The Gladstone Municipal Code. I'm going to try to get it so that you can see it. Bear with me one moment. I realized that if I had it full screen, that you wouldn't be able to see the entirety of it. So the Gladstone Municipal Code really plays with itself. So the definition of a rear lot line means the lot line that is opposite and most distant from the front lot line. So to know what the rear lot line is, you have to look at what the front lot line is. And the front lot line means a lot line separating a lot from a street other than an alley. And in the case of a corner lot, which this property is, either of the lot lines separating the lot from a street may be designated by the property owner as the front lot line. And the other such lot line designated as the street lot line. So the property owner is able to designate whether Arlington or Bellevue is the front lot line. And whichever one is opposite of that is going to be the rear lot line.
The street side.
No.
Oh, opposite, okay.
Opposite the front lot line that is designated by the property owner is the rear lot line.
And the street. We've been through one of these before, and and it's pretty simple. You're basically choosing, if I could say that, and if it works, you could meet the code. Okay.
And so the street, whichever street is not designated, the front line is the side street line.
Is the street side lot line.
Street side line, yes.
Yes.
And in deciding the the front line is not the driveway mailbox and main entrance to the building taken into account, or is it just entirely up to the owner?
That is not explicitly said in the Gladstone Municipal Code. So if it was the planner determining which side was the front. And I would use the address and the the front door. However, the code for Gladstone specifically says that the property owner gets to choose when it's a corner lot.
I think it's the important thing to note there is it really doesn't, as much as I wanted to just point it out as potentially being an extraordinary or exceptional circumstance for the property to help meet that one last criteria that I did not meet. I think the triangle, the corner triangle also helps point that out, the clear vision at the intersection. But really, it it was just to point out that there's really nowhere on my property that you could build a structure. Even even a four hundred and fifty six square foot structure that's allowed on his, you know, zero setback. It would be zero, almost zero setback on all four or on all three sides there, the the rear setback, the side setback and the front setback on Bellevue would still be almost zero. But it just won't allow for a structure large enough for me to really do anything with as far as park a vehicle in or any anything else that I'd be using it for.
Chair Milch, I have a couple of questions.
All right. Commissioner Pat Smith.
Mr. Whitmore. On page three, one of the summary staff recommendation, Mr. Whitmore, it said that the garage was converted to a dwelling unit in two thousand and seven. As I look at your plan, I noticed specifically the front elevation and left side elevation on page three forty. You have double windows in the front of the storage area and an outside entrance. And I'm wondering if that upstairs storage area has a M A D U in its future.
First of all, to address the the current structure being designated as an accessory dwelling unit. Yeah, that was done by the previous homeowner, who was actually a close friend of mine who I purchased the property. I rented this property for almost five years before purchasing it, and I can assure you it's anything but a dwelling unit. It was at one point in time occupied by a very close friend of mine who rented the room. There is currently water, the washer dryer for my house used to be out there. And there is a an electrical sub panel, but all of that would be capped for the time being. And that would be a unfinished space with the intention of saving up and trying to get that done at some point in time. But I have no immediate plans to convert that to an accessory dwelling within the near future anyway.
Thank you very much.
Are there other questions from commissioners for the applicant? All right. We'll put a pause here. At this point, we'll ask for public testimony. Tammy Bannick, did you have any requests from other members of the public to speak either in favor or in opposition to this project?
I did not receive any inquiries.
Okay. So apparently, there there is no other additional public testimony.
We do have a member of the public present.
It looks like she has raised her hand.
Okay.
Hi.
Hello.
Can you all hear me?
You can.
Hi, so this is so funny looking at all these maps and everything. My name's Helena, and I'm actually Dayton's neighbor. And so I'm the little house that you're also staring at. We share this property line. And so I just wanted to let you know I've looked at these plans and everything, and I understand kind of the the issue here because we both have the same sized house and storage is hard in these little Gladstone homes. And I just I just hope that you all take that into consideration. We're forever trying to improve both of our properties for things like sunlight and now also storage as we're making improvements on our houses. And it's always a common conversation that we have about where do you put things because we both don't have proper garages. And it's really tricky with storage in a small house. So I just really wanted to bring that to your consideration and also just highlight. I am actually the person that lives right here and would be staring at this structure. And I'm totally fine with the idea of it getting built and everything. I know that there's fancy words and all of that that goes along with this. But I do live here and I love Gladstone, but the houses are small. And and the lack of storage and space to put things is actually the one reason why we are interested in leaving Gladstone. So that's the only reason I'm house hunting, other than the fact that I love Gladstone and I love this community. So I encourage you to think about that as you look at these plans. I think he has a really tasteful plan for this garage, and I think it would look really nice and slick in our neighborhood. Also, if you haven't noticed, Dayton keeps his yard and everything just so nice and clean. He's like the most perfect neighbor you can imagine. So you know that this structure would be used for nothing but greatness and storage and something that we all need. So I just want to let you all know that.
All right. Thank you for that testimony.
Thank you so much, Helena.
If I could ask one question. I'm assuming that you live on the two hundred block of West Clackamas. So you you share the Bellevue side.
So I'm on Arlington, so I'm two one five West Arlington.
Okay, so you're on the opposite side. You would you would share the property line on Arlington with this house. Got it?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I was picturing you on the the side next to where the new garage was going to be.
Yeah, so it's right up to the back of my fence.
Got it.
Yes.
And for the record, I do have a good relationship with the the owners of the home on the other side. They're actually out of state now and are renting that property. And as well as a very close personal relationship with the person across the street on the other side of Bellevue, Pam. Who's not present this evening, but would be happy to get a letter from her if it if it takes, if we need to.
All right. Thank you very much. Tammy Bannick, is there any more public testimony that you're aware of?
I have not received any, no.
Okay. All right. Let me see. It would be appropriate at this time to entertain a motion to close the public hearing and begin deliberation.
I'll make a motion to close the the hearing at this time.
All right. Let's see. Oh, let me get a, let me call, prior to doing that, I'm rereading my script for this. I want to be sure that we give the staff time to just do a brief recap and then allow the applicant to do any rebuttal of the staff's recap. So let's do that first before we close the public hearing. Planner Fields.
I was waiting to see if any of you guys asked about the other garages that they mentioned in their presentation. I I made note of one of the garages that is a two story garage across the way. And that is in a different zoning district that is in the C two zoning district that does not have setbacks. The the other large garage that that had a picture in the application had a nineteen eighty nine building permit for a remodel of an existing garage. And so the larger garages that are are mentioned are do not have the same circumstance as circumstances this particular application. And the other garages identified in the application were all one story smaller structures.
Okay, that's that's a helpful clarification. I do remember your report indicating that several of the ones that he gave examples of were one story. This is an application for a two story, so that's different. Do you agree substantially with the applicant's statement that there is not space to both abide with the setback requirements and have a structure as large as four hundred and fifty square feet?
Based on the tax assessor information, the current Based on the tax assessor information, the current garage is three hundred and eighty square feet. Um. It. They may not be able to abide by the twenty-foot street side setback if they have four hundred and fifty square feet. Um, they would likely be able to abide by the five-foot side setback. But, uh. He, because the seven hundred and seventy-six square foot structure is two stories, you have to think about the footprint of it as well. Um.
So maybe half of that square footage is about the footprint of what's being proposed? I- i- is that a reasonable approximation?
I would have to take a calculator to the measurements. I did not have that ready in my mind.
But half of seven seventy-six is quite a bit less than four fifty. So even, uh, as the applicant indicated, a one-story, four hundred and fifty square foot structure. Would probably not be possible within the, the setback, um, uh, compliance.
However, you do have to, they, the four hundred and fifty square foot, um, structure would be able to have. The zero side and zero rear setbacks. And as proposed, um, the, the seven hundred and seventy-six square foot structure. Is a little bit over thirteen feet from the street side. So that would give you seven feet of additional, uh, setback that may be possible with a four hundred and fifty square foot. Structure.
Okay, I, I, I think these kinds of questions are getting a little more into, um, what you labeled as your next steps discussion. Because I, I know the way you work with applicants, you try to provide a way to, to have them go away happy, so. We can talk about that, uh, a little further, um.
I'd like to just ask Joy a quick question, uh, if it's okay. You mentioned that the other garages that I pointed out, um, granted are, are in a different zoning. Uh, district, but, um, you mentioned that, uh, a, a, a simple remodel request. Would I had, would I have to do this same variance request if I had just applied for a. Remodel of the existing structures, would I?
The existing structures. Sorry. The existing structures are considered non-conforming. They, they were built prior to the property being zoned R five with the current, um. Zoning requirements in the Gladstone municipal code. And so if you, um, re, did an interior remodel or did the. Replace the siding or fix the roof of the existing structures. You would be able to do that without a variance. Um, you would be able to do that. Um, in the exact same place it is now. The moment that you move it, you have to meet the current code. Or if you expand the footprint, you have to meet the current code. So if, if you stuck with the three hundred and eighty square foot garage and the shed. From nineteen seventy-six, um, you could, um.
I think that answers my question or addresses it. Thank you, Joy.
All right, and I will give you the applicant, uh, if, if you have any additional rebuttal to the, the planner's recommendation on this matter.
Uh, no, I just, like I said, I wanted to point out the, the thirty-foot triangle of, uh, clean site and how that affects. Even more so my lot, um, you know, keep in mind that these zoning districts, for whatever reason, if you're familiar with Arlington and Bellevue. Uh, Bellevue is, uh, it is the, where it switches, I believe, zoning districts from mixed use to. Um, residential and this little spot of Arlington. From Bellevue to, or yes, from Bellevue down to, I believe, the new twenty-four hour fitness is the only. Um, two-block area on Arlington, for whatever reason, on, on West Arlington, that's zoned residential. I believe everything else is mixed use. There's, uh, multiple businesses within a couple of blocks up here and. Um, they're just something else to consider.
Uh, Count, uh, Commissioner Mercer, you have a question?
Got a question from Mr. Whitmore. Uh. What is the? Not sure if this question's coming out right, but. What is the reason for the width of the garage?
You're muted, Mr. Whitmore.
I wanted to have a wide enough garage to accommodate for the stairs to get upstairs. As well as two vehicles to be parked inside. Um, but also allow for a wide enough space in between the home and the detached garage. Two-wheel lawnmowers, recycling bins, um, other things through, so the five-foot three. Um, was kind of, um, a well-thought-out strategy, I guess. Um, but I wanted to maximize the use of what is. You know, kind of dead space as I look at it in the way back there, especially with the. The unused space in between the two existing structures. I basically wanted to take advantage of as much of that square footage back there as possible. Uh, and so that's, I'm basically using the existing wall of the existing garage and pulled it towards. My house to determine how wide to make the structure.
Thank you for that answer. So you, you've actually got a larger-than-double car garage. Your, your proposal.
No, actually, um, a, a twenty-two-foot wide structure is actually a little bit smaller than the standard. A standard, uh, double-stall garage is typically twenty-four by twenty-four.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I, I believe we've heard from staff and, uh, the applicant has had an opportunity to, um. To, to comment, uh, and, um. Commissioner Natalie Smith, uh, I will hear your motion now.
I would like to make the motion that we, um, that we close the, um. The, the, uh, the hearing, the open hearing at this time.
Public here.
Public hearing, thank you.
All right, uh, it's been moved that we close the public hearing. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Natalie Smith and seconded by Commissioner Langston to close the public hearing. Uh, commissioners, I can see you all on the screen, all in favor, uh, indicate by raising your hand in front of the camera. All right, any opposed? Same sign? No opposed, the public hearing is closed, all right, at this time, um. Planning commissioners, uh, any further deliberation on this matter? The Commissioner Mercer.
I got a question for, uh, Joy. This is kind of hitting it from a different angle, but. You're not. Leaving the variances correct with the code. What would happen to have to happen? To make. Your concerns gone, otherwise, if you hacked off five feet of the side of the garage, would that do it?
My concern is many of the properties in Gladstone are fifty feet by. A one hundred feet in the R five zoning district. They can all build one structure that is four hundred and fifty square feet with zero side and rear setbacks. If we allow a normal-sized lot in the R five zoning district. To have a two-story garage. What is keeping all of the properties in the R five zoning district? From having a two-story garage with reduced rear and side setbacks? Would we be willing to have every R five? Property with a two-story garage? And looking at the, the proposed plan, it is seven hundred and seventy-six square feet of lot coverage. That is not the entire size of a structure. That's the, the area that it covers on the lot. Because it is, um, thirty-four and a half feet by twenty-two and a half feet as proposed. So that is my concern and that is why I recommended denial. Because I did not see any exception, um, based on topography or size. That would not apply to all the other R five properties in Gladstone.
So we could make the single-car garage and it still wouldn't work.
It seems like maybe he would be able to make the four fifty work, uh, with the zero lot line if he moved it back to the. The west, the southwest corner of the property, then he would, it tip, he should be fine there with. Based on, like you said, Joy, the four hundred and fifty-foot, um, structure, so that, it works that way.
It does. Single story or?
It's four hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay, single.
And it has to be single story, yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that, that's an option, uh, that it could, but we still need to make a decision on this particular application. And whether, uh, we accept staff's, uh, recommendation to deny the variance.
Yeah.
Uh, are there other, uh, comments or questions from?
Yeah. The, oh, sorry, for, uh, commissioners or everybody?
For, for Commissioner Langston, yes, go ahead.
Um, and I was just gonna say, uh, you know, the, those setbacks, you know, they're there, you know, for a reason. Um, you know, you start getting structures close to each other like that. You know, that's, you know, how fires can transfer from one place to another. Um, so there's, you know, other, uh, scenarios that, you know, you, we might not be thinking about too. For instance, uh, um, I, I'm working on a project right now where there is a structure that is on the lot line. Um, and you know with housing bill, uh, two thousand and eight, uh, you know, we can. Basically, people can build, you know, multi-use, uh, homes on lots, uh. You know, a little easier, um, so, uh, on this particular site that I'm on, uh, they're doing a apartment complex. And there is a structure on the lot line, um, and they ultimately had to change their, uh, stormwater. Um, um, layout because that structure is on the lot line and they would undermine that structure's foundation. Uh, because it was so close to their property, you know, so there's, there's un- uh, unattended consequences too from. Building, you know, so close to other people's property, um, you know, and for instance, too, you know. Uh, if you didn't capture that water correctly, it could dump, you know, off the roof, water onto other people's property. Therefore, potentially affecting, you know, their foundations too. Um, but. Yeah, that's, I just. I just wanted to point out, you know, that it, it seems weird or like. But there are reasons why those, those, uh, setbacks are there.
No, that's helpful. Some of these rules seem sort of arbit- arbitrary to us, but when you point out the practical reasons for them, that's, that's always helpful. Uh, Commissioner Labonte.
May I ask, the existing garage, how many square feet is the existing garage?
The existing structure, the, the front structure is approximately three hundred and twenty-six square feet. And then the, there's another ten-foot by ten-foot structure located right behind that, so it's almost the four hundred and. Fifty-six square feet that's allowed already between the two structures. Um, and I'd also like to, uh, address what, uh, Mr. Langston had to say, uh, most of, uh, the, the two items that you referenced. Were brought up and discussed in our pre-application meeting by both the fire department and the publicly utilities. Uh, stormwater for the amount of non-porous, uh, surfaces that I'd have on this property would be rec- or required. Um, and the fire marshal did say, or, uh, the, the fire department's representative did not seem to think that the five-foot-three path. That I left between the two structures would be a problem, but also would said that, uh, he would like to come visit the site. Um, um, prior to getting underway, just to double-check what the other structures and connecting backyards look like and things like that. So all of that would be addressed prior to completing the project.
Right, uh, again, this is the time for the, uh, for the commission to, uh, deliberate or ask questions or, uh. Share their, their other thoughts.
That's certainly, that information I'd love to, to have before making this decision would be that from the fire department.
Well, we won't have that tonight. The public hearing is closed. We won't be getting additional information, uh, of that nature tonight. It, it, would any member of the planning commission like to make a motion, uh, as to the disposition of this application? Uh, we have a recommendation from staff, um. Do we have a motion from a planning commissioner, uh, on whether we accept or, or, uh, don't accept the staff recommendation on this particular application?
I would like to make a motion regarding application number Z zero zero nine four twenty-one dash V. Uh, for the recommendation of denial.
All right, it's been moved that we deny the application for a variance, uh, is there a second? Motion, uh, it's been moved by, uh, Commissioner Natalie Smith, uh, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Langston. Uh, any additional discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Poole, um, I would just say that, uh, we, we all would like to give. People the benefit of doubt, we want to be flexible. But we've got a real strict criteria here and I'm not seeing enough evidence to. To approve it, that's, that's the hard part and, you know, how we feel about it isn't really what we're voting on here, so. I, I'm unfortunately, uh, going to vote against the approval. Thank you.
And, uh, Commissioner Poole, that was a very nice way that you put it, because this is all about the codes that we have to abide by, so.
And I appreciated, uh, Planner Field's comments earlier about not wanting to have this happen on numerous lots in the area. If we have, it happens here, other people will expect that, that, you know, perhaps the same thing will be done somewhere else. Um, uh, one, one positive thing I can, uh, uh, you know, point out too. Is that we are about to embark on, um, a massive, um, you know, revision of our codes here in Gladstone. Uh, to, uh, it, for one thing, to abide by new, uh, state legislation that requires additional, uh, housing options. Uh, and for another, just to review anything in there that's really outdated or, uh, you know, no longer works the same way. Um, and, and that would include some of the rules for housing in the, uh, neighboring district, the, uh, C two commercial zoning district. So, uh, I can't make any promises of what that new code will be, but there we are planning to have, uh, robust public engagement on that. And, um, all members of the public will be able to, uh, share the kinds of personal stories that we hear tonight about the things that, uh. Serve as, um, barriers to having a comfortable living, a livable, uh, home in some of our residential areas. And so if that, enough of that testimony is heard from, perhaps the codes will change and things will be different in the future. Uh, we can all, one can always hope, uh, but, uh, as for this particular motion tonight, um, I'm with the other commissioners who have spoken. Uh, I, I'm siding, uh, with the, uh, with the planner on, on denying the variance. Are there other, uh, commissioners like to make a comment before we take a vote? All right, we have a motion before us to, uh, accept the staff, uh, recommendation of denial of the variance, uh, for this property. Tammy, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Langston?
Uh, yes, I'm voting to deny.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercer?
I for denial.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
You're muted, Pat.
I'm voting for denial.
Chair Melch?
And I also vote yes for denial. So the, the vote is seven to zero. Uh, the application for variance is denied. The applicant, I think, has been informed of the, um, you know, the appeal process and the rights that uh he has for appeal. And uh there are some time limits involved in that, so uh be sure that if it's your intent to appeal the decision that you uh abide by the time limits. Uh, and uh, I thank you for coming tonight and sharing your testimony. Uh, I, you know, I, I don't like to send people away disappointed. Uh, none of us do. Uh, and this is a circumstance where uh, you know, the lot itself uh is, in just the layout of it, uh, gives you, as you've noted, very limited options under our current code. Uh, but I hope that either uh the code will change or uh you can find an alternative that uh. That does meet some, at least some of your needs. And I thank you for coming. All right, that concludes this matter. Tammy Bannick, is there any additional uh business that was not on the agenda that's uh come to your attention?
Uh, there is. The only thing I wanted to do was remind commissioners of uh cybersecurity forms that need to be turned in and cybersecurity training. I think you all received some reminders in the mail or in the, in your emails that were sent to both your personal and uh city email. And also, anyone that has not done their S E, S E I filing, please make sure you get that done. Um, here pretty soon as there may be fines that are imposed, so just giving you all reminders on that.
And just to clarify on the cybersecurity, there were, there were two requirements of us. One was to read the sixteen-page document that summarizes the city's policy. And then to sign a form and date it and turn it in showing that you had read it. And then the second requirement was to enroll in and complete the online course. So um you need to do both of those things and. All right, oh, and, and the, and the, I should have mentioned this last month, I was going to remind you, but I for, completely forgot. But the statement of economic interest that you have to file as a planning commissioner. Uh, this is the only office that's not an elected office, well, other than staff who has to fill this out. Uh, it's not a very complicated form. You, you talk about uh certain property holdings, but it, it only relates to, not, doesn't relate to your home. Doesn't relate to property outside of the city of Gladstone where you are serving. Uh, so you're not disclosing a lot of personal information, but it's an important form uh for public transparency uh by our uh appointed officials in this capacity. So if you've not completed it yet, please do so quickly.
Is, is the signed form to be returned uh to Ms. Bannick?
Yes, and, and I sent out separate because I've received some forms from some people and some, you know, that. Either didn't do the training or didn't do the form, so you each got a specific uh email today.
Can you sign it and then scan it back to you?
Yes, you can.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, one other reminder, uh, on May twenty-second, that's a Saturday, we have virtual land use training uh for uh planning commissioners and I believe city council members as well. From eight forty-five AM to five PM, so be sure to block that timeout on your schedule and uh make an effort to participate in that. The last time we had one of these, uh, I guess it was almost four years ago I participated, and I remember our discussion of variances and we spoke about. Topological differences in somebody's lot or a huge boulder that, you know, sat right where you'd want to put something and, and that was what prevented you from meeting setback requirements. So we didn't see those kinds of things tonight, and uh that's why, you know, it was not possible to go ahead and, and approve this variance because of the absence of those kinds of, of barriers. So let's move then to business from the planning commission. Um, I will start at the opposite end of the um still imaginary row of seats on the, on the dais. Uh, so I will begin with uh Commissioner uh Pat Smith. Uh, do you have any business uh for us tonight?
Yes, I do. Both short, I hope. Uh, I, I find it interesting to go by and look at the things that we have approved in the past and how they're coming along. Uh, the animal husbandry depository on West Arlington seems to be well underway and almost done. But I do have some concerns about eighteen thousand Webster Road. Uh, when we approved that, uh, we had a couple of uh citizens testify as, as to the. You pick out an adjective, but an inappropriate look uh of the property. And we were told the county said that they would be monitoring uh the people that are going to develop that and take care of it. We're three months past the uh winter storm and the, the property is still covered with debris uh from the storm. And uh is not very inviting for the neighbors that complained about how it looked prior to. And I'm wondering if the county is, anything the county can do to prod those people to maybe begin to clean the place up.
But uh, I don't know who would be the one to get in touch with them. I, I was told, I think I read something that there was a spring start date to the actual construction. I know the building was being used as a uh kind of a training location for sheriffs. One day, there were a huge number of sheriff's vehicles there. Uh, I think they were just making use of it before, um, you know, some of the demolition work was, was being done. Um, yeah, I know Commissioner, Planner Fields, you are a county staff member, but it is not appropriate. I think you're not, you are not on contact regarding that building, so um.
The, the contact for that building has recently changed. And the director of the Housing Authority uh is currently being filled by an interim staff member. Um, I, as a Gladstone staff, I can follow up and inquire because of that condition of approval for maintaining the property. Um, if you don't mind shooting me a, a quick email to remind me, that would be very helpful. Um, Commissioner Smith?
Okay.
All right, good. Well, that's.
I do have one other quick thing, Chair Melch, and specifically since the mayor's with us. I'm wondering, uh, along with uh the State of Oregon guidelines, are we moving any closer to be able to having these meetings face to face? And if so, what are the criteria to do that?
Well, we would like to have in-person meetings starting in July. That's what our goal is right now, but with us being back in the high-risk category, I'm not sure if that's going to be feasible, but we're definitely gonna. Do whatever we can because we realize the benefit of in-person. This, it's, we've all gotten over Zoom. I think it's time to get back to really connect. Um, I do have one quick comment on the eighth out eighteen, the Webster Road property. Our C four group just had a presentation from them last week. And they were waiting for the funds to be released from the portable housing bond measure. And I believe they're expecting the funds in July. So, but you're right, they should get in there and clean it up. In the meantime, that wasn't much that they needed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. That's helpful to know. Uh, and uh, and I don't know, you know, the schools went through uh some understanding that people had to be six, students had to be six feet apart and then they changed it to three feet apart. Uh, I don't know if we've had similar guidance as far as um adults in a, in an open public meeting in a, you know, in a city hall chamber. But um, uh, we'll wait for all that information and guidance and hope that the July target can be met. All right, Commissioner Mercero, do you have any business uh from the, from the commissioners?
I've got no comments this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Poole?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts, and, and one of them is about um live meetings. You know, even if we need to do a hybrid in the future where we have a quorum of the commissioners there, so be it. Um, the county is operating currently with live, hybrid, live as well as Zoom. Um, and of course, all the seats are six feet apart and uh, so I, I think given the fact that we have a exceptional building. With fortunately updated air conditioning and filtration and, and other features. Um, I'm sure there's a way to, to get that up and going when fiscal July comes around, so I am looking forward to it. A couple of other thoughts. One is, there's an issue that I've been involved in for many years and uh. Obviously, it's coming to a boil now, and that's the aspect, that's the prospect of tolling us. Charging a toll to use an existing freeway lane and charging a higher toll during peak times. And then if I can say this tongue-in-cheek, recently, ODOT told us that that won't create any extra traffic. I actually heard that from them. And that tolling issue is a real hot potato, and I know it's on, it's on the, the city's mind, it's on residents' mind. Um, and certainly as a planning commissioner or commission, I'm not asking for us to act, but. Anything the council can do with outreach and education on that involvement, it would be great. And the last thing I'll mention is that I am looking forward to assisting with the, the downtown code and changes that will be made. And uh, um, that's, that's gonna be a real big, big, big issue for us. Getting, getting everything to where it's practical and doable. Um, it, it's, it's gonna take a lot of work, but we'll get there, so I appreciate everyone's involvement and uh. Uh, the new commissioners, planning commissioners have worked out well, and Tom, he's got no experience at all, right, Tom? Welcome back, my friend. Welcome back to the planning commission. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Poole. Um, Commissioner Labonte?
Thank you, and I guess um I'd probably like to follow up with some of your comments last regarding the tolling. Um, and Chairman Milch, she had mentioned maybe some, a little, uh, some insight from the Traffic Safety Advisory Board and how it relates to the tolling. And the, the prospect of very likely more, more traffic coming through. I mean, we can just look at population increase period to talk about that, but certainly the tolls unlikely will help, uh, meaning will likely have more traffic. I know the Traffic Safety Advisory Board is trying to be in front of this for as long as I've been part of the board. Um, it comes up on the uh Traffic Safety Advisory uh Plan, the uh comprehensive plan that we put out in two thousand seventeen. And long story short, um, we, I'm interested to kind of gauge your interest um in supporting speed reduction on Oakfield and Webster Roads. Uh, we could kind of. With also the thought of increased population up on Webster, certainly near the, the Nature Park, um, with that extra unit on eighteen hundred Webster Road. Uh, this one that we've been working for, for a while now in, on the Transportation Board. I know Park and Rec um has similar feelings regarding speed uh near arcs, which happened to uh play into the Nature Park um situation. Some, I, I guess, roundabout, um, I, I, I'd be very interested to see what type of support folks on this board might uh have for. Uh, promoting speed reduction on Oakfield or Webster, uh, or if this is even the correct venue for that. Um, but it's, I guess that is one part of the business that I'd like to talk about. And. With that, the pedestrian crossing near Webster to the Nature Park ways is trying to slow traffic down there, especially where we've got more pedestrian traffic in that area. Now, we're concerned about it with traffic safety unanimously. Um, and again, Park and Rec, so I'd, I'd be very interested in seeing how this board may be able to um help facilitate. Um, this, the city to adopt a speed reduction on Webster and Oakfield.
All right, I, I don't know whether that's a matter that would come before the planning commission, before going to city council, uh, but uh. You know, it does involve a change, uh, putting a crosswalk in, for example, it might be something that would come before us. So uh, keep us posted on that discussion, and if it comes to us, uh, we will be forewarned that that's something to, uh, to think about. Commissioner Natalie Smith?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrew Langston?
Yeah, I just, I kind of have a quick question for Joy. Uh, um, I've been thinking about uh, uh. Upgrading facilities and whatnot, and I was just curious if there's a mechanism in our code that is triggered based on an application that might come in. Maybe it requires it to be like a developer or, or e- even if it's a certain-sized lot or development. Um, that would trigger things like, um, you know, doing half-street improvements and uh sidewalk improvements. Um, and, you know, installing new light poles, replacing light poles. Um, or even um upgrading, you know, swells and water retention centers uh for, for the area. Um, do we have anything like that in, in, in our Gladstone code?
You do for design review applications.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so anytime there is a commercial property that is redeveloped and expanded. Where additional parking is required for the land use, anytime vacant lots are um built upon, design review would be triggered. Um, you also have it for subdivisions. So uh, if you have a partition, there is, there is certain of those requirements that are triggered. Um, but subdivisions also trigger those, those criteria. Um, conditional use applications. Uh, they are conditional uses and they are up to the criteria that you provide them with. In my staff report, so you have noticed that I tend to lean towards the design review criteria for conditional uses. As examples, but that is not, it's something that you as the planning commissioners have to um follow verbatim. Because those are not specific requirements in the code for conditional use applications.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have. That is, nice to see everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Langston. Thanks for bringing that up. You and I spoke about that a few days ago. You indicated that you had seen uh other, other municipalities uh imposing. You know, stricter requirements or additional requirements on new developments to help with some of those kinds of improvements that, that. That help the community uh more broadly than just the local site, so um, you know, that's something for us to consider. Uh, someone raised a question at our last meeting whether there were any plans for uh residential development on McLaughlin. Uh, just a few days after that, my grandson and I were walking down McLaughlin to uh go to the donut shop. Um, not something I'd recommend. It's a dangerous street to walk on with a four-year-old, uh, even with a sidewalk. Uh, but we went past uh the uh, the commercial building that, that used to be the um airstream trailer uh place. And noticed that it is now uh an additional sort of independent uh used vehicle uh place. And I looked it up uh on the, the planning, on the, on the county's tax records. Uh, it's a, about a two-and-a-half-acre lot. And it is in an area that is zoned where a planned unit development could be in there, uh, could go in there theoretically. This is not, there's no plans for this to my, to my knowledge. Uh, but just to give you an idea, uh, assuming that thirty units per acre. Um, minimum for uh the kinds of development that we saw on the Webster Ridge Apartments. You could have a seventy-five-unit apartment complex uh on that lot. Uh, and it would be very convenient to bus transportation. So potentially in the future, when we're talking about how do we meet the future housing needs in Gladstone? That's something that would be allowable. Uh, but uh, it, to my knowledge, again, nobody's talking about doing that right now. But the question that come up, and I just wanted you to know uh what our code uh allows uh on, along that, that particular business district. The other, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, did you see Ta- uh Mayor Stempel's hand up?
Oh, I didn't. Did you have another comment about that, uh, Mayor Stempel?
Um, all I was gonna say to those that are really concerned about transportation in two oh five tolling. It's nice, threw my hat in the ring to be the Clackamas County Representative on the Region One Area Commission of Transportation. So that we would have a voice at the table about I two oh five tolling. So the people that are really interested, contact me, let. So the people that are really interested, contact me, let me know what your concerns are, and I can be that conduit to make sure that we're being heard.
All right, that's good. That's, you're better to have an official seat at the table than just kind of doing it independently, so uh that's helpful to know. Uh, the other thing, I will just piggyback on something Commissioner Poole said. Uh, this week, uh, three members of the planning commission, uh, Commissioner Poole, Commissioner Langston and myself. Uh, are reviewing the proposals that have come in from five different firms who have applied to be the ones to conduct the. Uh, community engagement and the revision of our codes. Uh, and uh, we were given a big notebook to review. We will be scoring them and talking about them later this week. This week or next week? Yes, this week, and then uh, and then we will be uh, you know, selecting some finalists and reviewing them later. So I want to thank those two planning commissioners for participating in that process, along with the mayor and uh city staff. And uh, that is coming along, and we hope to be making good progress on there. That's all I have for tonight. Um, oh, one more thing, I often recommend books. Uh, there's a company called Island Press, which is a nonprofit publisher that publishes a lot of books about. Planning and uh sustainable uh architecture and uh a variety of things related to the work that planning commissioners do. Uh, this week, all of their books, even the ones that are normally forty dollars or eighty dollars, if you buy them in um. eBook format, like for a Kindle or uh another type of pad. Uh, you can get them for five dollars each. I think it's four ninety-nine. Uh, I bought five different books this week uh that I had had on my wish list and that I didn't want to pay forty dollars for and could never find used. So uh, look up Island Press and uh, uh, you know, you might find some titles there that would relate to this work and uh. You know, get yourself a little little continuing education in the whole planning process.
That's awesome. Thanks for sharing.
You're welcome. All right, uh, I think that's all we have for tonight. Uh, Planner Fields, thank you very much for guiding us through the hearing. Uh, Tammy Bannack, you're always great to have on hand here and help us through and keep us uh uh up with what's going on and um. Reminder again to everyone, follow all the things you need to be doing, SEIs, cyber course and cyber signing. And uh, I think that's it for tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the planning commission meeting.
I second that.
All right, uh, Commissioner Poole moved and Commissioners Langston and Natalie Smith uh both seconded. All in favor of adjourning, indicate by showing your hand on the camera?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? We are adjourned. It's eight oh four PM. Thank you very much for coming.